It is, it is March thirteenth and it's time for our monthly stormwater meeting. Gettysburg Borough Stormwater Authority. Welcome. I just want to say, the only announcement I have is that last month, our friends at the Watershed Alliance of Adams County were kind enough to sponsor the Land Studies folks' presentation on the Culp's Run project. It was surprisingly well attended. I want to thank Pat for organizing it. The Watershed did a great job and I think the people there really learned something.
I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from the attendees.
Oh, good.
And Mr. Credit Goes to Land Studies, when I was talking to them about writing an article, they volunteered to make the presentation.
Yeah. Well, they did a nice job. We miss Chad, but there'll be other opportunities for Chad to speak and to explain what's going on in the stormwater world. With that being said, I'm turning this over to our solicitor.
All right.
Because it's time for our reorganization meeting because we did not have a meeting in January or February. So, Adam, take it away.
Very good. So as Mike noted, this is actually the first meeting of the Stormwater Authority in 2023, as there was no meeting in January or February. Before we go into electing officers, I just wanted to verify who our new member is that was appointed by the Borough Council.
Mr. Lawler.
John?
He was reappointed.
Yes. All right. So you have your five-year term now. Everyone probably recalls when the authority was formed, it was staggered term. So as people reappointed or appointed new by council, they are filling five-year terms. So I just wanted to make sure we all knew who is here and who's up next. I will entertain a motion or a nomination from any members of the authority for the position of chairman of the authority.
Nominate Mr. Malawiki.
I'll second that.
Do you accept?
Yes, I accept. I accept. I'll do it.
Are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Second. On favor of closing nominations, say aye.
Aye.
There being no other nominees, I believe, Mr. Malawiki, you are the duly elected chair and I will turn the meeting back over to you.
Well, thank you, everyone, for your confidence, or maybe because no one else wants to do it. But I will be happy to do it for another year. And let's now have a motion, please, to nominate a vice chair of the board.
Nominate Mr. Lawler.
I'll second that. Any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed. All in favor of Mr. Lawler being vice chairman, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Same sign. Not hearing any. Congratulations, John.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, we, is there a motion to nominate a secretary of the board?
I'll nominate Wesley Hyzer.
I'll second that. Any other nominations? Okay. I hereby say nominations are closed. Let us vote. All in favor of Wesley Hyzer being secretary, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Same sign. Not hearing any. Congratulations, Wes. Back on board. Okay. I would like, as we usually do, we have a consent agenda and the three things are approving the agenda as presented, approving all bills and payrolls as presented, we received those in advance, and a motion to approve the December 12th meeting minutes. Any discussion on any three of those items? Okay. Let's, we'll take them as one motion. So do I have a motion from anyone to accept these items as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. Okay, thank you. Let's vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No? Okay, those three agenda, those three items now pass. We do not have any special presentation. Charles, I'll look to you for...
I would just note, there's no one here from the public.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. Yes. And there's no one here from the public for public comment. Thank you. Charles, can you weigh in on the financials, please?
Yes. Doing double duty here, so pardon. I was taking your votes down for the minutes. Quickly, the authority ended the year last year. Where did it go? A little bit in the hole. $160,500 deficit last year. That's understandable in that because if you recall, in revenue generation, we expected a $500,000 NIFWIF grant with our fingers crossed. And as we all know, it did not come through. But we had some considerable expenses for the Culp's Run stream restoration. So that is primarily why the authority ended in negative. However, not to fret, we still have $355,000 in the bank as of last week.
So that was a year-to-date deficit. However, from a cash basis, we're about $350,000.
Correct.
Okay.
And my comments on that, unless there's other questions, and then I can go into Deborah's.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm okay. Any questions?
Okay. Deborah sent an email to the board earlier, yeah, last week, sometime last week. It was actually the sixth. We had $515,000 billed last year. We actually collected $515,138,000 last year. So that was generated through 1,884 individual invoices. So we were right on par with our projections there. Thirty-three liens were filed on February of 22nd of this year. Thus far, four liens have been settled. Historically, 2019, there were 45 liens, seven remain outstanding. 2020, there were 41 liens, 16 remain outstanding. 2021, 42 liens and 26 outstanding. And 2022, 33 liens with 28 still outstanding.
Is it the same properties not paying each year?
Generally speaking, they're frequent flyers, but Adam, you could probably speak a little more.
When you're done, I can address that.
Okay.
If I jump in front of you if there's anything else.
No, that's all I had.
So just to kind of clarify on the number of liens, there were actually 26 that were filed at the end of February. That 33, there were some that, for whatever reason, when the previous certified letter went out to the property owners, maybe it just went to one of the names instead of a husband and wife or co-property owners, or maybe there was a typo on the address. So for a couple of them, I pulled the mountain and said, we need to send this again to these particular people and also include another address that we have reason to believe these people may be located at. Typically, it's a business. You know, maybe it wasn't sent to the property, maybe it was sent to PO Box. I said, try to send it to both because we don't want to file liens if we don't have to. So there were a couple that were pulled out and if they don't pay by the end of the month, then the authority of need be can file a lien. But it was 26 that was filed and then there were, as I said, several that were pulled out. It has been trending down. I believe of those seven, a number have paid since. Last year, it was in the low 30s. The year before that, it was 40. The year before that, it was 40. So the good news is that people are paying. There are some repeat properties, but generally speaking, as they sell and turnover and you get new people in, they have been paying more, it seems. There's only a few that I think have had liens filed against them every year. I'm going to say maybe five. But as those liens are sitting there, you know, once the property sells in an arms-length transaction or if it goes through a foreclosure or whatever the circumstances, they are being paid. So liens are accumulating in number, but it's really not tremendously out of hand, I would say.
Do they accumulate further damages, say, three years ago? Does it accumulate every year?
It's interest.
So for this year, for the first time, the authority changed its rates, rules and regs to allow for interest.
Okay.
Legally speaking, the Municipal Claims Act allows for up to 10%. I believe the authority went for six.
It did.
Which is the same interest rate that judgments in Pennsylvania, if you have a judgment against you via court, that accrues at 6%. So for this year's lien...
We're consistent with that, yeah. We're consistent with that.
But, I mean, for example, there was, I think, in the last two weeks, there were two properties that Deborah emailed me about that had paid. One of them had three liens against it for the last three years and the people sold it and they all got paid. And they were all cleared off. And that's what happens. There's usually, I'd say, five to 10 a year, then she emails, somebody calls her and says, this property's settled. We see there's a lien. They call for a payoff. So they do get cleared eventually.
Eventually, yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, Charles? Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. I asked, and maybe Chad can talk about this, how we're doing on our grants that we applied for.
So if you recall, there was two grants, a large H2O and a small H2O. The large was over $500,000, the small is under $500,000. The larger one was for the Chambersburg Street storm pipe that is associated with the Gettysburg Interlude Phase B project. That grant application was about 1.5, or 1.8 million. Fifty percent, our 50% match would be $900,000.
Right.
We expect to, there really hasn't been anything new on that. We expect to hear back from both of these grants around July, is what we're hearing.
Okay.
The other one, the under $500,000, was for restorations to the channel walls, all on Stevens Run. The namely one is the one on Bream Alley, we're going to discuss a little bit later in the agenda here tonight. They did reach back to us, DCED, about that application. They said, wow, this one doesn't necessarily fit that program too well. It does fit the flood mitigation program very well, which is also happening at the same time with the same parameters. So it was very easy for DCED to take our application and move it from one program to the other. So we were like, great, let's go ahead and do that. We had to provide them with a little bit more information, but it wasn't a heavy lift. Some of our concerns about what was going to happen there with that weren't a major concern. So we were happy to hear that that project does check off most of their requirements. So we feel optimistic about that one as well. Again, sometime in July, we're hoping to hear back from that.
Right. Okay. I have questions, but not until we get to the actual new business on Bream Alley. So I'll hold my questions. Any other discussion about the grants or... Thank you. I appreciate that. Culp's Run maintenance agreement? I think you sent some emails.
Yeah. So the original agreement circulated prior to the end of last year, if you can remember. Land Studies provided us with an agreement to, it was through the year 27, 2027, to do maintenance on the stream restoration. Some of that is required by our permit, our DEP joint permit. We had a couple of concerns with it. First, they had six visits per year proposed. We went back to them and they said, does it take that many? Can you do it in less? So it's now knocked down to four visits per year. The second concern was the length, the term, that this was committing the authority to a five-year program. So that is something that they just today, in an email to me, said that they would be fine by putting a clause or something saying that annually, this needs to be renewed. And then the other one was about the mowing. They said that there was an area that needs to be mowed. I believe if that does need to be mowed, that'll happen by the National Park Service. I had an email in to Zach Belitho at the National Park Service to confirm that. I just got around to sending that today. So I haven't heard back yet from Zach to confirm that. But for now, that has been taken out of Land Studies' contract. That was the big ticket item. Their expense before was about $20,000 annually and it's now $13,200 annually.
So our plan B would be Robbie, if the National Park Service doesn't mow?
Well, or Land Studies could do it. Or we can sub it out to somebody, another mowing company. I'll be very surprised if we have to go there. I'd say we cross that bridge when we get there. I don't know that the National Park Service is going to want other people milling on their property.
I agree. I agree. You're absolutely right.
And I believe there's some other parameters that will have to be followed. I sent an email today with the W's, who, what, where, when and why. Like, there is, there's some science behind when you mow and, you know, in terms of when these things germinate and how often it gets mowed. So it's not like you just want to have a contract with just anybody in there doing it, but...
And we really don't want to put that burden on Robbie and his crew.
Right.
On top of that, but...
And with Land Studies' contract, they'll have, at least for this first year, or I believe that actually for the first two years, they have to have two reports per year sent into DEP and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And then after that, it goes down to one permit per year, or one report per year until the year '27. And then the other thing they'll be monitoring is to make sure there's no erosion that's happening or washouts. Knock on wood, I run there, buy there pretty often and it looks like it's holding up pretty well. So
Right.
Hoping that there's not going to be any expense there. But if they did that, they would let us know how much that would cost and they'll...
So it's our expense if there's a huge problem?
Yeah, that would be our expense.
Okay. Yep. I figured. Any other questions? It's a nice project and we've, I think, done very good work and...
I think the only other piece of information is that depending on, because I was asking them when they would do the first spraying, they have to spray for invasives and they'd try to do that pretty early in the season, whenever the growing season starts. And they said that's usually not before the end of March. It's usually the first couple of weeks in April. And they'll make sure they coordinate with the National Park Service and they go out there and check for invasives that are happening. At this point, we're still, I looked into next week's weather, it looks like there's still a couple of days where it's going to be 32 degrees or below for the 10-day forecast. So I suspect that realistically, until they get some serious vegetation, it's going to be well in April.
Right. Okay. So I think if you are willing, if you're, if you wanted to make a motion, I would suggest the motion would be to approve the contract with Land Studies. The date of the proposal is 1/4/2022 with the contingency that it be, a clause be added that it needs to be renewed annually.
How much was it?
$13,200.
Which we have in the budget.
Per year?
Yeah, that's what they have there right now, per year. Yep. There's also a clause, by the way, as a side note, there's a termination agreement term and inner terms and condition that says that anytime we can, within 30 days of notice, we can terminate the contract. That's also in there for us.
So let's form a motion.
Can we help you with that again?
Yep.
Approve the contract with Land Studies dated 1/4/2022, in the amount of $13,200 for the Culp's Run yearly maintenance and monitoring.
Charles, do you have that for the...
I'm not even close to having that.
I can try.
Okay.
You want me to write it for you?
Yep. Let's do it. Yeah, yeah, I know. I saw you.
All right. The motion on the table says, a motion to approve contract with Land Studies dated January 4th, 2022, in the amount of $13,200 for the Culp's Run yearly maintenance monitoring.
It would be 23.
Yep. I just... They actually had 22 and I just now realized that's the type of...
Yeah. Okay. So that motion is being proposed and is on the table. Any discussion?
That's for one year.
One year.
So next year, we'd have a separate, another new contract.
Another, I guess.
Initially, it was to be five.
Right.
And so that's a long time to...
Yeah.
Yep. So we'll do this every year.
Same type of question I was asking.
My goal is that in a year, it seems like it's holding up pretty well. If it's starting to
We won't need it.
Have mature vegetation in there and establishing, then we don't need them here four times a year.
Right.
Right. Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion about the motion?
Who made the motion?
I was going to say, I'll make the motion.
Oh, okay. Okay. And I'll second. I'll second the motion as read by Charles. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Not hearing any. That motion passes. Thank you, Chad. I appreciate it. Okay, Mayor Alley.
So Mayor Alley, I wanted to bring this to your attention tonight. I'm not anticipating that we're going to be ready to make any decision on this. Robbie and I went out, took a look at, there's a huge sycamore tree between Mayor Alley and the stream that cuts in around some rental park, some rentals, garages. We originally responded to the call from the property owner suggesting that it was the stream erosion that was causing the tree, the condition of the tree to be questionable. What we found when we were there, some of the other neighboring property owners came out and said, well, that's not what we're concerned about. We're concerned about the rotting on this side. So Robbie got a tree expert in, took a look at it, and he said, yeah, that tree needs to come down because of the rotting, not because of the erosion. So that's the skinny on this sycamore tree. Now, back up to a couple of years ago, when we originally put together our pollution-reduction plan, we did consider doing erosion control on that stream. What we found out whenever we brought Land Studies in and we started evaluating it a little bit harder, was the way that we had to control the erosion is with cladding it with rock.
It's armor.
And that is not, it's armoring. And DEP does not give us credits for that. So that got pushed down on our list for our pollution-reduction plan.
Can we get a grant for that, though?
Probably not.
All right.
Not if you fulfill...
It's flood control.
Yeah, maybe a flood control grant, but yeah, yeah.
That's the stretch of stretches.
Yeah, that would be a stretch, right? So now, the other components with this, too, is that tree is kind of holding up the embankment that would otherwise wash out Mayor Alley.
And the road.
And Mayor Alley, yep. And then it's also kind of protecting our bridge that goes under Court Alley. So there are two components there that are interests to the boroughs. You know, our Court Alley Bridge and our actual Mayor Alley, that that tree's kind of helping with. Now, the tree needs to come down. When a tree goes down, and it has to happen soon, it has to happen, we're finding out this year, is that...
It should, it should happen this year, yeah.
In fact, the, what was the tree service?
Commissioner of Tree Services wanted evaluated and he said for us to take it down, he's not going to have anybody climb it because he's that worried that it could get him down.
Oh, really? Yeah. That was telling, whenever I heard that, that he doesn't even want to have somebody climb it to take it down.
So that's a crane? That's a huge tree. That means a crane.
That's a huge crane, yeah. Well, they'll use their bucket trucks first to limb out and then they'll use the crane to bring the major wood down.
Right. So we're going to have a conversation outside of this meeting on what is the borough's role in removal of the tree. That's kind of a separate thing, but the reason I wanted to bring it to your attention, the Stormwater Authority, is to start thinking about whenever we take that tree down, what are we going to do differently at that embankment? Are we going to try to, there's ideas of lining the side of the embankment with a rock or some type of one of those gravity wall systems or something like that. But we're going to have to do something different in there once that tree goes down. We'll have some time. Once they take the tree down, they'll leave the root wad and the roots in place and that'll hold itself up for, let's just say, for the next year. So we don't have to make a decision on this immediately. This is, my intent was to make you guys aware of this. If you're not, if you haven't seen it, go out there and take a look at it and we can have some additional discussion on this as the borough decides on how to handle this tree issue.
Well, I would think integral to this would be the making sure that the bridge and the abutments of the bridge are protected and appropriately handled because, I mean, that could be a problem.
Yeah. Yeah, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of players here. It's like, kind of who's responsible for this is the question, right? So
Right.
There's an alley, there's a bridge, the tree's on private property, there's a stream, like who...
And it's right up against a set of garages, at least on one side, and alleys on the...
No, the tree is between the stream and the alley.
Right.
Right. The garage is on the other side.
I know, but what I'm saying is, there's a lot, there's a lot going on there.
Right.
Yeah. And the tree itself...
It's on property, private property, though, right?
It is.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm confident that it's on private property.
Yeah, it is. It's not in the alleys right away.
So the sidebar with the borough is, who's going to pay for what?
Right. Right. That's the, right, that's the, that's the $4,500 question. I was originally expecting this was going to be a $10,000 tree, but I mean, I think we got a cost estimate for like $4,500, something like that. Do you remember?
Only $4,500 to take that tree down?
That's what I'm thinking. Wow.
It was more than, it wasn't $4,500, it was a little...
They wanted $700.
But it wasn't near $10,000.
Below $5 grand.
It was nothing to take down. It could have been. I don't recall.
I think it was low.
I don't recall the dollar.
It was $4,500.
Yeah. Peter Griffin of Code Enforcement has the
The paperwork.
The paperwork on the, on the evaluation of the tree.
But that's the smaller component of this. If we end up putting, rock isn't hugely expensive, but if we wanted to put a retaining wall or something in there, well, then there's an expense, that's a significant expense. Now you're getting up into the $40,000, $50,000 range.
Right.
And there's, you know, you talk about the fencing and the hand railing and stuff. Like, right now, the tree kind of protects the alley from the drop-off.
Right.
So without the tree, that, does it need a guide rail, those kind of things? So that, now you start, that's where you're getting into a, this could be a $50,000 discussion. So again, I have more questions than I have answers right now. So just something to make you aware of and then I think we'll follow up.
Will Gavi and Baskets work there?
Sorry?
Gavi and Baskets work there?
Yeah, I've used Gavi and Baskets in the past. I'm not a totally huge fan of it. The reason why is they're becoming less and less used is because you don't really save much money over the gravity wall systems. There's so many companies that make those things now that those are a bit, a little bit more maintenance-friendly. Kids don't come and pull the rocks out of the basket. A Gavi and Basket is a wire basket with rock in it. You guys are familiar with that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And we had, we did them in Mill Creek and Yoborough one time and then they had issues with kids coming pulling rocks out of them and... Yeah, and we had, we had, we did them in, in Mill Creek and Yo' Borough one time, and then they had issues with kids coming pulling rocks out of them and stuff, and, and they just, they're on its maintenance. The, the, the concrete wall systems now, there's three or four companies just in Adams County that make these things now. Um, so they're pretty competitive in their pricing, and you really can't beat them. So that would be the way to go, I would say. If we don't just clad it with R5s and just, and on a slope, like on a one-to-one slope, I mean, that would be the other option.
Question, what, just for discussion purposes, now, if the, the tree owner has a faulty tree and it falls down and creates damage, isn't that the responsibility of the tree owner?
That's what we'd say.
I don't think that's the question for the engineer.
Well, I mean, I'm not familiar with this site, but is it, is it in the right-of-way of the alley?
No.
No, it's off the right-of-way.
And you're deeming it to be at risk of causing property damage to others?
Well, professionals deem that.
Yeah.
And you've notified the landowner of that professional opinion?
I, I don't know, did Peters send anything to him yet, or no?
No, I can't answer that.
That's in the code enforcement department. We don't know that answer yet. They will be notified, though, within, in short order.
I know a fair number of property owners that take trees down because they wanna remove themselves from the liability of the damage when the tree comes down.
Right.
Just raising that as a point here. And, uh, the other point would be, in my experience, if the tree goes down on its own, uh, and doesn't break, the root wad comes up, and now you have a totally unstable bank. But if you cut it down and leave the root wad there, they're usually, that's, sometimes a fix, you know, putting a root wad in. And you could shore it up with, uh, live staking, and there's other ways of doing it. I haven't looked at it, but I'm just, wanna throw that as a possibility.
Right. It's right behind the Farnsworth House.
Yep, right behind the Farnsworth.
Alright, so, take, take a look. Okay. Any, uh, other questions? Alright, thank you for that report. Uh, I just asked to be put on the agenda on the Stevens Wall research. Uh, I am, uh, as some of you know, I've, I've gone back through the borough minutes. Um, I, I started at eighteen oh six. Uh, I am up to nineteen, uh, uh, no, yeah, yeah, nineteen ninety-something. Um, I found out some interesting things. Some of them more interesting than others, uh, without getting into a lot of discussion. One of the things that I found very interesting is that it's not called Stevens Run. The original name was Getty's Run. And I made someone read the, the cursive of the person taking minutes in like the eighteen forties, when it was referred to as Getty's Run. So for all those real technical people out there, uh, it's not the Tiber, it's not Stevens Run. But I, I'll be finishing up hopefully in the next couple of months, and then I told Charles that I'll, I'll give a report. It seems to me generally that at some point in the forties, fifties, there was a change of thinking on the borough. And up to that point, if you live next to the Tiber, or Getty's Run, or Stevens Run, that wall was yours, you, you, you did it, and, and the borough inspected it, and that's that. Uh, that changed, but we'll see how this comes out, because it brings up all sorts of legal issues. Because there are, there are walls built right on it. And, um, there are legal issues if we say, yes, it's ours as the borough, in order to get grant money, to say, yeah, we own the whole thing. Well, do we own what's on top of it? And so blah, 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 but that's for another day. But I just wanted to let you know, I'm, I'm still at it. And, um, that was one little tidbit about the name of the stream. And I am gonna go back when I'm done to find out if the borough ever ordained it, which was the favorite word back then, as Stevens Run. If it was ever in the minutes. The Tiber is used liberally and throughout. The minutes of the borough.
So. I think that belongs to some sort of state entity. That was just done in Biglerville recently.
Yeah, somebody just, I, I, I read it in the paper.
One of our students did that. That, do you know, Pat, who gets to decide?
Uh, there's a whole process. I know they went through it over at the egg center with Alm's House Run. Vitrin, I, I didn't, wasn't directly involved. But I was talking to Mike, uh, about, uh, the official names from, uh, the state's point of view is in.
It's Stevens Run.
Chapter ninety-three, and, uh, the Potomac Drains is in appendix Z. And I didn't look at it before it came down here, but, uh, I'm pretty sure it's Stevens Run.
Yeah, oh, it is. I, I think officially the state, it's Stevens Run.
Okay.
Yeah. According to the army engineers, it's Stevens Run.
Right, it is, it is. But I just wanna, at, at, when I'm done with all of the wall stuff, at some point I'll go back and say, and try to figure out if the borough, if the borough said it was Stevens Run. But it doesn't matter. I mean, that's just a, a sidebar, because officially the state calls it Stevens Run, even though they're wrong. It's Getty's Run, but, kidding.
Imagine it.
Imagine.
I think it's about to be Malawiki Run.
No, Malawiki is, is running away from this. And I got some tidbits for Charles and other things, some of the ordinances and crazy things. But that's enough on that. Braem Alley, new business.
So one of the, one of the parts of the walls that we are confident that we own is along Braem Alley. Charles, if you wanted to pull up that photo log, I went out there and took some additional photos of about this Vanna here. This is the beginning of the wall. It rounds right here. This wa, this piece of the wall must've been failing with the borough did over the years, this, this is kinda some poured concrete to kinda hold it together. If we do ever replace the wall, we would wanna bring the wall around a little bit further, so I just wanted to point out that. Go to the next picture. This piece of the wall had apparently failed in the past. You can see the color of the mortar here, kind of ends right here, and then there's no mortar after that.
Yeah.
So, this is where the water's crashing in at that curve, and I was showing you this port over here. So it makes sense that that was the first place it failed. Um, but that had already been fixed once, kind of with some new mortar. You can see in the next picture, we'll get into this failure here next. Here's the, the hole in the wall, that piece of the wall's getting ready to go next. I wanted, these pictures kinda, pictures worth a thousand words. We had talked about whether, if this thing can be saved whenever GMA comes through here, that's ultimately where we're gonna go to. I'm suggesting that it can't be saved because of things like that. So go ahead, next picture. It's just another picture of that hole in the wall. There's two pipes that come out, inlets in this. You can see the one pipe's right here, that's, the, 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 um, old petrified clay pipe is crushed, and it's coming out in pieces. The inlet's pretty much filled up at this point. So whenever they come through, both of those two inlets will have to come out and those pipes be in fix, so that's another part of the issue. See another failure down a little bit further, go to the next picture. There's a failure at the next one down. We didn't see a whole lot of bulging on this, so we don't feel like there's a lot of mo, um, water pressure behind it. And that could be because there's a lot of utilities back there, there's a, um, gas lines and other things like that that could be letting the, the, the water breathe, but it's just more about the, there's no mortar at any of these joints. So it's just failing. The rocks are just falling apart at that point. It's another picture of that pipe that you can see failing.
That just goes up to the inlet, right?
Yep, yep, only goes, what, five feet?
Terretta.
Yep. Keep going. More failure, it's bulging there a little bit, but not too bad. It's just more, again, the mortar's gone. You can see, eh, a whole way along the bottom here, the mortar's gone.
Can you go back two pictures?
I think that's it.
Can you go back two pictures?
Right there. Is that square a stone, or is that concrete?
Looks like a stone.
Looks like a stone, doesn't it?
It's a very large stone.
Big square.
I'm gonna say it's a stone, but I don't know a hundred percent sure of that.
It's pretty big.
It's a big stone.
Yeah, it's a little too square for me, but.
I know what you're saying, like, it looks too.
I've.
Too geometric.
Well, dealt with stuff like that in the past, and then sometimes you'd be surprised what might be behind it. You might not wanna know what's behind it.
Right.
Is that covering something?
It's a plug. You mean it's a plug of some sort?
Like, come in, and from, there's two catch basins in that alley, so did you have a picture of the other catch basin?
I don't have a picture of the other one, no.
Well, you know, I've been up and down that alley a lot since we've been discussing this, and the alley itself is in awful shape. You know, it's, the, the whole, I mean, the whole road is deteriorating, or, or, you know, it's given this sort of, so goodness knows what's under there. You know, I mean, I mean, you said utilities, but it, it sounds, I mean, it sounds like a big, you know, road project as well.
Yeah, right now it's water and gas. Sewer is actually under Togas' property. They're gonna be moving it to the alley.
There's a portion of it that's private sewer in there.
They're gonna be moving it to, under the alley with the new interceptor, and the whole alley's gonna get repaved.
Yeah, but I mean, it's almost like it should be rebuilt, you know, not just paved, but, you know, the.
Depending what they find when they dig, they will be rebuilding a lot of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and whenever they rebuild it, I want them to reshape it as well, because currently it's super elevated down against the back of the wall, and that's not a great idea to run the water against the wall. It's averting the back of the wall, it puts water into the wall. It's better to have it a little bit more, um, concave. We try to put the, you know, crown right in the middle of the alley, but it might end up being like two-thirds over with like an inlet or something like that. Um, but we don't, we were, we're gonna try to keep the water from running down and against the back of that wall.
Right.
And you don't mean crown lane, you mean a reverse crown?
Reverse crown.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, because that corner that you first showed, uh, the first picture, or the second picture, it, it really is bad when you come in from Middle Street.
Yeah.
That's.
I, and I didn't get into the, there's a caple on the wall with a, a railing, and the railing isn't, doesn't really meet any of today's code requirements. Um, so if that would be replaced, then you have to get in the railing and stuff, but I think the other, the, to, to push the discussion along, the next thing is about the scheduling of this. We know that there's an interceptor project.
Right.
We think that they are gonna start, um, construction sometime this fall. That's what they're hoping for. They bid this summer, could start constructing this fall. That's gonna be more than a years-long project. Um, so they'll still be building this wall at this time, I mean, the interceptor at this time next year, for sure. The other component is we have a grant application in, our H2O grant that I talked about earlier. We think that we're gonna get that information somewhere around July. So there's a couple of variables at play here in terms of, you know, the, the advantage of, of waiting for GMA's project versus not. If it, if it go, if we, we don't do anything in terms of design permitting now, and they start their project, and then the contractor is in there digging and the wall goes, then there's gonna be a bigger expense, because then we're gonna be trying to react to emergency permitting situations, and we could have a contractor that's char, charging a daily fee for a change order.
Well, you've talked to them, right?
Yes.
GMA, being them.
Yep.
And the, the conversation probably was that, can we coordinate this?
Yeah, and I think that, I think that there's some, some willingness to have some more discussions. At the end of the, uh, what I suggested to, to Mark, um, was that at some point we have a, a discussion, a meeting with them. The Stormwater, not just me, cause right now it's kinda like I'm the middleman, I'm talking to him, I'm talking to you guys. We need to be able to come to consensus, so that I don't have to explain to both parties, cause I can't speak for GMA and.
No.
And, um, I, I, I think they're willing to have a discussion. They, they can see the pros and cons of the two different options here. They can, they can see the advantage of, you know, of course, I'm an engineer, so I'm measure twice, cut once type of a thing. Would be better, in my opinion, if this thing was designed and permitted now, so that whenever they start construction, we just know the whole thing's getting rebuilt. I feel like Stormwater Authority may be missing a cha, an opportunity to have a share, a partner in, in the stor, in the municipal authority, if we don't do anything. Let's say that they get through here, and their contractor just does a really good job with a mini X and puts this big pipe in beside that wall and doesn't damage it. Well, we're still stuck with the wall that's getting ready to fail.
Yeah.
So that's what I mean by, we could be missing an opportunity. But going back to, to the fall last year, we weren't armed with as good a pictures as we are now. There was a lot of vegetation in that stream, and these pictures we just took here in February, so, um, we can see a little bit better. I shared those with Mark, and he's like, ooh, yeah, I see what you're saying now. And, and I didn't have those pictures whenever I was talking to you guys back in, when we were talking November, December, and the discussion at that point was, well, go back to GMA and say, it's not on our to-do list right now. If they, if the wall fails, it's on them. So that's what I told them at the time. But after I started, we started doing our, we do a six-month inspection on this wall and a couple other pe, places where we think it's, um, a priority one, we call them. This inspection started revealing some more things, and now I'm recirculating the discussion, because I really think that we be, we're, we're missing the boat if we don't do something. Again, pictures worth a thousand words.
Have they picked their excavator yet?
No, I don't think they're gonna be putting this thing out the bid till summertime.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, as a group, do we feel that it would be beneficial to sit down with GMA now, in the very near future, to discuss this?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah, it's gotta be sooner rather than later.
Right.
And to be honest, I'm not sure exactly, what do you mean by a group? Do you mean like, you know, ad hoc committee, or?
No, I think both, I mean, we're a small group. If, if everyone's willing to, you know, if, if, if everyone can't make it, then everyone can't make it, but I would think I need to be there, and anyone else would like to come along. And, and John, you know, you, you have some experience probably with these walls. You know, and, and Pat.
I did some re-engineering on the pipes he's talking about, that, for, for hand rev.
So I would say invite both boards, or if they, with, to, to, to one of their meetings, or a special meeting.
That would be a joint meeting.
Yeah, you have to advertise, which, I mean, isn't a problem, but if you're, if you're meeting discussing business and you have the two together, you have to, have to advertise.
Yeah, and that's fine.
The nature of what's going on here probably should happen.
Yeah.
It really probably should have a joint meeting.
Yeah, and I'm in favor of that.
Even if they were to bring in a really good excavator, and they could do all that work, and we're still stuck with the wall at the end, now when the wall fails, we have to go in and fix the wall, but we have to be very careful of the utilities that they just put in. So that just makes it worse for us to do. I mean, the time to do this is all at once.
That's right. And, and, and again, I say, this is also a road project. And we're talking about utilities in the wall. I think the third component is what's underneath that road other than utilities, because I don't think it's good.
Well, it could be held together with railroad tracks.
That's right. The trolley tracks went down next to that?
Uh, some places across, some places it was closer. I, I've never really had a good map of it.
Yeah.
But I've done enough digging out there to tell you that I would not be surprised at all. I mean, where Cadori's, where Cadori's memorial is.
Right.
I don't, did they find any trolley tracks when they put the, uh, there you go.
I remember that. Yep. In fact, in fact, part of the, could we had to go through the historic museum commission and do some, with our analysis, if you look in the trail, the, the paving of the trail, there's stamped railroad ties that, and there's a, there's a historic placard there to, to draw attention to. And there was not only railroad ties, but the old abutments were there, the old concrete abutments for the rail, for the trolley line.
Pat.
Yeah.
Yep.
I, I was just gonna suggest that rather than having a formal meeting that had to be advertised, because, uh, I think there ought to be some fact-finding that where no decisions are made, where you could have a more informal, give and take, maybe at the site, where everybody's looking at the same thing, uh, and then.
Well, I don't think, I, I agree with you. I, I mean, I don't think we're gonna be making a decision, but in, as far as transparency is concerned, I have no problem saying we're having a joint meeting, whether it's out there, or here, or their place. You know, I think that, that, that gives us the feeling of everything's above board and, and no one's, you know, trying to skirt around things. But, but I don't think we're gonna be making, and I'm looking at Chad, because I know he's gonna be talking to them. I, I don't think anybody's making decisions yet. We just have to make sure we get on the same page. And, you know, Robbie needs to be there as well, so.
Yeah, so, so we do have utility coordination meetings. Um, that would be a potential venue, but nobody from the board comes to them.
No, but, but just, does their whole board need to be?
But, but does, does their whole board need to be here or just Mark?
Well, I, I guess in some ways that's their decision. Um, I think, I think we as a group, we have enough interest in this that many of us are gonna show up to the meeting.
I mean, the reason why.
Fair to say?
The reason why I ask that is because whenever we do our joint meetings with Columbia Gas and GMA, and we have a project where everybody's contributing.
Right.
Mark makes those decisions and then he takes it back to the board.
I would equate it to our meetings we had on, called Trump. You know, the interested party showed up, what's going on, what are the questions, what are the issues? Decisions weren't necessarily made then, but.
No, no decisions were made, because, because we had a project.
Yeah, we had a project plan.
Right.
This is to, this is actually to create a project plan or at least to coordinate it.
Yeah, we're, we're not making a decision because that's.
Yeah.
That's, that's a little down the road, we have some time. But I, I think we have to get on the same page with what we see and what we think are, you know, reasonable options here. And if Mark's gonna represent his board, then I think that's their, that's their business.
I'm just asking that. I mean, that would be an, that'd be a question to Mark, but you could get Mark to one of these meetings easier than you could get their board to a meeting.
Right. Yeah, and we can, we can invite Mark.
It, it really just comes down to how they wanna do things.
Yeah.
Right, the ca- the question of who pays for what really is a political decision. But if Mark, if they basically are gonna accept Mark's guidance and, you know, he can communicate that to them, I would agree that it might be simpler just to have Mark come here.
Yep. It's up to them, I mean. So is next month, um, good? As, I don't know what Mark's schedule is, but as, as far as overall project schedule, Chad, I mean, keeping this, uh, ahead of any decisions?
Our next utility meeting with him isn't until May 16th, it looks like.
So we should then invite Mark to the next meeting here?
And that would be an option if he would be willing to come here.
See if that works for him.
See if he's available.
Yeah, and, and we're just gonna have a discussion. There's no decisions.
Right.
Um, you know, we can have more pictures and maybe he can bring some things that, you know, talk about what he's thinking.
Yep.
I think there'd be valuable, value in going in and looking at the site maybe together.
And I'll have to be with Chad because, or both.
Yep. The other thing I can do is forward a, an email, I put together an email with some pros and cons to, uh, getting this thing started now in terms of the design and permitting and waiting. So I'll throw that out to you guys, so you can take a look at it and start thinking about that. But, you know, the, the, the idea, general idea is if this thing was designed and permitted, then Mark's contractor could potentially bid on this thing. If it's not designed and it's a reactionary thing, you're either getting a change order price from his contractor or we're bidding it separately and getting our own contractor, with a separate third-party contractor. So you see what I mean, like, now, so, and the reason I say that is because you asked a question is, is about the scheduling. Sooner if we weren't, if we pick option A, was getting it designed and permitted now and hope, hopes that it could be bid, bid with his project, well then, time's of the essence.
Well, so, and I guess my question is, is April too long to wait for Mark? Because if, if you, I, I'm, I'm asking your advice, because if time is of the essence, then we need to meet ahead of time and at least talk about option A of coordinating this together.
I think, didn't we kind of reach consensus head-on, consensus that it makes sense to do it together?
I think we did.
I'm not sure.
I was gonna go back and just say.
Part of the decision that has to be made. I mean, what decision are we looking to be made here?
Well, that's, I, I agree with you. That's what we need to do because I think we're all on the same page, that the consensus is we need to coordinate this with GMA, the sooner the better.
Yeah, to me, the only thing that has to be settled out is who pays for what.
Well, well, and that's gonna be. Which we can debate, but at least we gotta be together on coordinating with them, which we're not at this point.
Yeah, but I think we're okay with cord, having Jake go and coordinate.
If we can get them, if we can get them to coordinate, I mean, to me, it's just common sense that we do this together.
Right, and it, there should be economies of scale with that. But we're not paying for their, for their sewer and they don't wanna pay for our wall. We, and that's probably the way we're going into this realistically. But there should be economies here.
Well, and the first payment that needs to be made is the design and permitting, right?
Right.
So if we're talking about what has to be made sooner than later, um, who's paying for the design and permitting is the question that needs to be, that needs to be answered sooner than later if we wanna have this thing ready for their bidding process. Because you're gonna be looking at months until you can get a design and permit pulled together for that thing. Now, keep, in, in, in that same vein, we have a grant application that would pay for that.
That's right.
That we're not gonna know about, even, we're not even gonna get the announcement until July. So the reality of grant applications, Charles and I know that so too well, even once we get the announcement, it's still months later until we actually get an agreement in place to where we can start spending the money.
So we would have to front money for design and permit.
If we wanted to be able to do this with GMA's project.
Right.
I, I don't see how that grant, waiting on the grant is gonna allow us to do it with their project. It's gonna be a separate thing if we wait for the grant.
Does this grant allow for reimbursement?
It usually doesn't until there's an obligation date, which is usually after, maybe like September. They might make an obligation date in September, at that point we can maybe get reimbursed for expenses after that date. But typically, no.
Okay, Pat, you had a question?
Well, that was, that was the question, whether we could get reimbursed retroactively.
Okay.
Which isn't my experience with grants.
No, no.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I think we've learned not to be optimistic about any chance of reimbursement.
And you're still gonna get the same amount of, close to $500,000, whether you use that on engineering or not. But I'm just saying that you could use some of that money on engineering if you got it in time.
It sounds like we're, uh, kind of tied in to, for common sense purposes, on a schedule that's pretty, that's faster than we can sit down and make agreements. Sounds like that to me, so. Uh, yeah, I think we oughta have an upfront agreement that we sit down and, and with reasonable sort of, between us after the fact, because we're not gonna be able to sort it out ahead of, I don't think.
Well, no, I, yeah, I agree. I, I think the next step probably is Chad, uh, telling GMA that we're interested in coordinating with them on this and that we'd like to have Mark come to our meeting or their, some of their board members. We don't care, but we just wanna have a discussion about this. The sooner the better. And if that's before our next meeting, then, you know, let's, let's do it. We're not, as I keep saying, we're not ready to make decisions, but we are ready to talk about the various options.
Yeah.
And we need to hear what they're thinking.
Would the goal be to make, come up with a memorandum of understanding?
Or something like that.
Is that some reasonable?
Yep.
I would probably.
About who's gonna pay for what? That's what it all boils down to. And when? And knowing, going back to that, we have $350,000 that we don't wanna spend the whole thing, but we can spend some of it on upfront permitting and, and design.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, an MOU is the, the toll or, or document that we've used in the past with GMA and Columbia Gas when we do a shared project like that.
Right. But that whole thing is a real mess.
So it sounds like somebody's gotta propose an MOU to, Mark, we don't need a meeting for that, right? We could make that statement here, delegating you or Chad or somebody to go down there, at least start roughing out an MOU so we have something to talk about next month.
Oh, that's right, that's right, we can, we can start that process.
Yeah, with the goal of.
Yep.
At least looking at and discussing it next month here.
Yes, that, that would be at the latest. Now, if time is of the essence, there may be things that need to occur before that, and I'm willing to be involved in that. And there are other, and we should put it out to everybody, Chad, if, if we decide to have a meeting on site to say, meeting on site at this time, come on down if you wanna look at it along with GMA, or if we just come down with you for an hour and you can give us a quick tour. Whether they wanna or not, so. So we're totally familiar. And, and funny, it's not funny, the thing is, we're not talking about the other side of this. We're only talking about one side, one wall, not the other wall.
Only because of the ownership, otherwise we would be talking about that one too.
That's right, so we have, exactly.
Because that one's eroding across the bottom and that one, if that one fails, it's even a bigger catastrophe because a garage is coming in with it.
Yeah. So.
It's a block wall.
We own that side.
What's that?
We don't own that side, do we?
Right, right, that's why we're not talking about that one.
That's right, that's right, that's exactly right. Maybe at the end of this thing, we will, I, I don't know.
I don't know if we don't own it, I just, I'm just sure that we own Bream, which is why, only, that's why we're talking about that one.
Well, let me circle back to, to some of the research I was doing and this, you know, I thought a, a number of times, huh, this is one for Adam. Well, that is one for Adam. That house, is there anything in the, in the legal record that indicates anything that has to do with that wall?
Sure.
And so, nothing that we have to figure out tomorrow, but that's something should be, that should be researched since we're there.
You don't wanna mess around with that.
I guess, no.
No. What's that?
My guess would be there won't be.
No, I, I, but I, I agree too. It was probably just a handshake and a, do this.
If that, yeah.
If that.
Yeah, and I've not seen anything, um, in the 60s or se- that would've been 50s or 60s probably. I've, I've not seen anything, but.
Problem is, is if that, if and when, I mean, it's only a matter of time until the wall fails. It could be, it could be another 10 or 20 years, I don't know. But when that wall fails, um, it will clog the Stevens or Geddes or Tyra and it'll cause significant amount of flooding. I'm, I'm pretty confident with that, because whenever that wall fails, it, it's just, the whole thing's gonna go over. And it's a pretty high wall on that side, including that garage could come in with it. So there's gonna be, it, it would, it would be a major concern for not just that property owner, but everybody that lives in that area. And we're talking about, the Bream wall, I'm gonna say is, is over 200,000, maybe under 300,000. But that wall's gonna be also over, we're two, we're talking about a $200,000 or $300,000 wall. Wall's probably closer to the same value as property, so.
Yep.
That's a topic for another day, I think.
Yeah, we're not ready to go down that track.
Well, in that area is, I mean, if things get under the Federal Point property where that goes underground and gets caught up on pipes that cross under there.
Right.
That can be, there's a reason those couplings are in that pipe fence, whatever you wanna call it, on top of that wall. Couplings are there so we could reach down in with the backhoe, because all that stuff has to be wheelbarried out. There's no way to get equipment under there. So when you have a flooding issue over there, it's all handwork to get it out. Then we cut those top rails, those top pipes, so we could take them apart, get the boom down low enough that you just shoveled it out of the wheelbarrow, dumped the wheelbarrows into the backhoe bucket to bring it up.
I told you that.
Yeah.
I remember that.
Yep.
Yeah, that was, that was some shrewd engineering on those pipes, buddy, I wanna tell you. That was Ralph Carey, John Lawver design.
Oh, boy.
Worked for years.
Yeah.
Still works.
Still works.
Quick question, Chad, when you say permits, what permits are you talking about?
I would hope that we could do this with a GP 11.
Is that a chapter 105?
Yes, yes, chapter 105, the EP permit. So we would, that would not.
The Fish Commission or who grants this?
The EP.
The EP.
Yeah, that would not, if we get a GP, what I think, that would be a GP 11. I talked to Jared, he agrees, that would not need to go to Army Corps for like a joint permit. So, because we wouldn't be changing the flood plan or anything, we would be, if anything, making a little bit better.
Okay, so the ball's in your court, talk to GMA to see if we can't get together. And also, is everybody in favor of a little tour of that area if we can set it up? And we can invite GMA, if not, that's fine, we'll just do it ourselves sometime. So thank you.
Got it.
Any other questions? We're not hearing anything. Public comment, since there's no public here, there's no, there'll be no comments. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. No opposition, this, um, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
It's the March meeting of the Borough Council of the Borough of Gettysburg. I ask that everyone please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge. Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. An announcement this evening, an executive session of the Borough Council of the Borough of Gettysburg was conducted immediately following the February 27th, 2023 work session meeting of the Borough Council, consistent with section 708A1 and section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes. One, to discuss matters involving the employment and the terms, conditions, and benefits of employment of borough employees. And two, to review and discuss matters of borough business which have conducted in public could lead to the disclosure of information or matters of confidentiality protected by law. All right, got a chance to review the agenda and the minutes on accept a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any questions or comments about the agenda this evening? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next you have meeting minutes for the February 13th session and also the work session of February 27th. Before we have that motion, are there any known corrections to those minutes? All right, if not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting of February 13th, 2023 and the council work session of February 27th, 2023 as presented?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Carl, Mr. Lawver, any, uh, questions or comments? Not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that takes us to our special presentation. Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mapplehanny, and Mrs. Mapplehanny, if you'd like to move over to me, please. As most of us know, the Borough of Gettysburg has an official flag, it's in council chamber. That flag was designed by Robert Mapplehanny. And on March 10th, last Friday, it was the 20th anniversary of the Borough Council adopting this as the official flag of Gettysburg. And we want to recognize that 20th anniversary, which also falls on March 10th, which is the day Gettysburg in the year 1806, the Pennsylvania Legislature ordained the Borough of Gettysburg to be a municipality independent of Cumberland County. So it's also the birth of Gettysburg. After talking to Mr. Mapplehanny and some other people, we would like probably to have this become a yearly recognition, not only of the anniversary of the flag, but of the anniversary of the birth of Gettysburg. And we can get people involved, maybe schoolchildren, Bob come up here, we talked about it, having a history of the flag given at school programs. I see teachers smiling, maybe having some things downtown where, um, borough business can, can be involved. It's all in its conception stage. But we want to start with recognizing the 20th anniversary of the Borough of Gettysburg flag. I'm going to read the proclamation, Mr. Mapplehanny. I think you have some comments.
Yes, I do.
So we'll start with, whereas on March 10th, 2003, the Borough Council of Gettysburg voted to adopt the official town flag. Whereas the dominant element of the flag design is a stylized representation of Lincoln Square, Gettysburg's historic crossroads. The three stars represent the three days of the Battle of Gettysburg and the three wards into which the borough is divided. Whereas the color. Whereas the colors of red, white, and blue donate Gettysburg's significance in United States history. I'm adding, the Union was born in Philadelphia, but it was preserved in Gettysburg. The blue filled with gold stars denotes the Pennsylvania state colors. Whereas Gettysburg Borough Council voted to adopt this flag, designed by local rep, sorry, local resident, Robert Mapplehanny, by chance on exactly the hundred and ninety fifth, one hundred and ninety-seventh anniversary of the ordination of the Borough of Gettysburg, when it became a municipality independent from Cumberland Township in Adams County. Whereas the United States Navy Guided Missile Cruiser, USS Gettysburg, has designated this flag as its house flag, which is flown by the ship on special occasions and into battle. The Gettysburg community sent the flag as an expression of its respect and support for the men and women who served aboard the USS Gettysburg. Whereas March tenth, two thousand and twenty-three marked the twentieth anniversary of the Borough Council adopting the official flag. Therefore, I Rita C. Frailing, Mayor, join the community in declaring March, two thousand and twenty-three, the official flag of the Borough of Gettysburg month. Whoops, thank you, under my seal this day, thank you, Mr. Mapplehanny.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Rita just pretty much said most, almost everything I was about to say. That she invited me here to make a few comments about the development of the flag. So, my name is Bob Mapplehanny, I'm retired now, but for thirty years, I operated a business here in Gettysburg, where I, I designed and produced banners and flags. My wife and I don't live in the borough, but we are happy to say we have a Gettysburg address. So the story of the flag starts in two thousand and two, when I got a call from Borough Manager Charlie Giles, uh, Charlie Sterner. Charlie Sterner was the Borough Manager and he said, Mac, I think the town ought to have a flag. So I thought that was a great idea, flags tend to bring people together. Picture the opening ceremony of the Olympics, one person holding a flag represents millions of people, pretty cool idea. So I started to look for design ideas and I was drawn to something that's on display up there by the screen. It's a pen and ink drawing and it was done by Eugene Sickles. I believe the date on that drawing is nineteen sixty-six. So some of you here might be old enough to remember Gene Sickles. He was a very interesting guy, he was a sign painter, an artist, battlefield guide, very interested in, in history. He also designed not just that emblem, but for the borough, but he also designed the Adams County emblem that's in use today. So I thought that would be a great place to start, so if I could have the next slide, Charles, thank you. There was something else interesting about Gene Sickles, who designed that, that emblem on the left, or you call it, could call it a coat of arms or a seal. It was used right away by the borough on their letterhead and official documents. So another interesting thing about Gene Sickles is he was a very active volunteer fireman. In fact, just a couple of weeks ago in the Gettysburg Times, they named the recipient, the most recent recipient of the Gene Sickles Award for outstanding volunteer service. So that's who Eugene Sickles was, besides an artist. So I took his design and started to simplify it, because flags should be simple and bold. And as, as Mayor Frailing explained, I kind of reduced a lot of the symbolism out of the seal and turned it into the, what I thought were the most basic elements. The crossroads of the high, of the roads that brought the armies to Gettysburg and the three stars, and, and then I added color, as you see. So now I want to turn to just a moment of trivia. I suppose there are a lot of people in this room who know what the word is that refers to the study of flags. That would be vexillology, the study of flags. But here's the trivia question for tonight, who coined that term, vexillology, the study of flags? His name was Whitney Smith and he ran the Flag Research Center in Winchester, Massachusetts. So he's a world-renowned flag expert. So once we had the design figured out, one of our Borough Council members at the time, Caroline Smith, wrote a letter to Whitney Smith and asking him to evaluate the design. And I gave everyone a copy of the letter tonight that we received back from Whitney Smith, addressed to Caroline Smith, Borough Council member, and I, I love the last sentence. "I hope that you will be in a position to encourage adoption of this handsome, distinctive, unique, and symbolic flag." And so it was adopted by the Borough Council, thanks in part, in large part, to Caroline Smith's relentless promotion. And after the design was approved, Mayor Ed, at the time, Ed Troxel, said he got a lapel pin from the mayor of Waco, Texas. And he says, I think we should have a lapel pin, too, so. Then I worked up this design here on the front, which is probably familiar to everyone, is the lapel pin that, that we wear today. After the flag was approved, Charlie Sterner got on the phone and called the captain of the USS Gettysburg and told him about the flag being adopted, thank you, Charles, and asked if we should, we could send him a flag, send the ship a flag. And the captain's response was that he was going to make the Gettysburg flag the official house flag of the Guided Missile Cruiser, USS Gettysburg. And it's flown, we're told, when special guests are on board and flown into battle, which I don't think they've ever had to do, I hope they don't. So that prompted us to make, we made a big flag, ten feet by eight feet, rather large. We ran it up the flagpole on Lincoln Square with a brief ceremony, complete with bagpipes, and sent it off to the ship, and I'm pretty sure that's a picture of the flag right there. That flag flew on Lincoln Square before we sent it to the ship. So it is interesting to note, as the mayor pointed out, that this vote to adopt the flag took place on March tenth. And that's when the Pennsylvania Legislature ordained Gettysburg to be an independent municipality, sort of like our Independence Day. So that's my presentation, thank you very much for, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I can tell you that there is a prevalence of that symbolism on the Gettysburg, we were down there in the fall. They have utilized it a number of places around the ship, so very nice to see. All right, that'll take us to public comment, note this first session is restricted to those items that are on the agenda. Any public comment this evening? Yes?
Kathy Gilbert.
Yep, if you, sorry, if you could use the pod, Kathy, I'm sorry, it just helps the folks at home with the, the audio.
Never mind, what I was going to talk about is your own agenda, I apologize.
Okay, all right, we have the, the second round now, round later for items that are off. All right. Any public comment otherwise? All right, if not, that takes us to our current and old business and we start this month with planning.
Hello, you all have my report for this month. I have no motions for the agenda, but I do want to note that our next Planning Commission meeting is next Monday, the twentieth, at seven PM in this room. And we also had a really nice article in the paper on Friday about the rezoning and we got quite a good response from that for people volunteering for the committee. So we'll be looking over those volunteer applications this week and getting back to people.
Okay, thank you, any questions for Ms. Marshall this month? If not, we'll go on to historic and environmental preservation, Mr. Gable, I assume you're covering?
I don't have any comments, other than her motion.
Any questions that we can try to handle related to Harb or environmental preservation? Seeing storm. Okay, if not, can someone please make the Harb motion for the month?
I'll make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Borough of Gettysburg Historic Architectural Review Board, Harb, following its review on February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and grant certificates of appropriateness for the following applications as presented. COA twenty-three dash zero 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 two, major project, three seventeen Baltimore Street. Diane Bertoli to approve the demolition of an existing garage and construction of a new garage, as presented to the board in the application dated January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. COA dash two three zero 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 seven, major project, forty-three dash forty-five East Middle Street. Doug Millard changed prior, COA approval dated May eighteenth, two thousand and eleven. Exterior facade of existing garage in the application presented to the board dated February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, excluding paragraph two of scope in this motion for change of use and internal modification for non-personal use.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, questions or comments about the Harb motion this month? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that takes us then to parking, Ms. Thistle.
Good evening, you all have my report, just a few things, the LPP permits in February are up to now forty-five for the month, so that is the highest that we've had. The college kids are actually buying more themselves, along with people locally working in town. So it is becoming more popular than it has been. And the, we are no longer using passport parking, that has ended, and pay by phone is the only app you can use to pay for app parking. And that's about it.
Any questions for Ms. Thistle this month? Seeing none, we'll move on to public works, Mr. Harbaugh.
Good evening, you should all have my report. Just a highlight from last month's report with the Christmas trees, we collected one hundred and eighty-seven Christmas trees for recycling this year from the holiday season. Something that's not in my report that I just found out on Friday and had a conversation with Mr. Harity from Waste Management today. The Big Belly dumpsters have arrived and there's actually four of them instead of two. So there'd be two additional spots put in town, they're going to install them next week.
Very good, yeah, the initial conversation we had had was when the new units arrived, that they would move those two units that are in place to other locations. So that's great to hear that they have kind of been responsive to some of my requests, that we get them. And there's one spot on Steinware Avenue we discussed, which is, even last year, during, the fourth last year fell on a Saturday? Trying to remember exactly, but the weekend of the fourth, even with them doing pickups, as they were supposed to, because there was no pickup on Sunday, and I think no pickup on the holiday itself, because of that, there was one in the first block of Steinware Avenue, it was just totally overrun. So we'll be looking, and Charles identified some locations and Robbie identified some locations, we can go with that.
There's going to be two of them on the square, the one that's there now.
On the opposite corner, that's correct.
So, sorry, so just to clarify for public record, so the one that's there now, that's not Big Belly, it's a medium belly, maybe, is going to be moved elsewhere?
Yes.
To Steinware?
Yes.
And the two big bellies that they're bringing will replace the medium belly and then an additional big belly on the square?
Right.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, that was one of the, the talking points we had after we went through the process that we went through. You know, it sure would be nice, we know it's not in the contract, but it sure would be nice, so they were responsive. Any other questions for Mr. Harbaugh this month? That takes us on to the engineers' report, Mr. Clayball.
Good evening, everyone, you have a copy of my written report, there is a motion on your agenda, but before I get to that, there was one other update that I wanted to give you on the Gettysburg Gateway Connectivity Project, that's the Baltimore Street project. You did authorize us to start with the engineering, but two days after you authorized us, we had, Charles and I had a meeting with PennDOT and they notified us that there is another reimbursement agreement that needs to be signed before we can actually start generating expenses. So we're on a holding pattern right now until we get it, an NTP, a notice to proceed from, from PennDOT to start with the design. They were saying somewhere in the two to three month timeframe. So we subsequently looked back at our schedule and we were already trying to push this thing to see if we were, so the year twenty twenty-six is the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the United States and there's some things going on that summer and we were looking at how our schedule's going to match up perfectly with the year twenty twenty-six for being in construction, which isn't a good idea. So at this point now, we think it's going to be best to push construction to January of two thousand and twenty-seven. So essentially, that's what we're looking at, it's about two years worth of design, one way or the other, once we finally do get started. But we're looking at potentially breaking ground on January twenty twenty-seven, again, that's subject to funding. We're, we're still working on that raise grant, has been reapplied for, so fingers crossed that we get the funding for construction, we can actually do what I'm suggesting. So that is it for updates, the other thing on your agenda, the motion on the agenda is for the Racehorse Alley Parking Garage Maintenance Project. We're pretty happy with the bid results that we got, first, I'll give you a, a brief history on this, you can remember back a few years ago, we had a really tough time even getting someone to bid on this project, there was years whenever nobody bid on the project. And largely because the amount that we were bidding was under the twenty-five thousand, we were trying to stay under the twenty-five thousand dollar prevailing wage threshold. So we started doing it every other year and doubling that cost, going for a project in the fifty to eighty thousand dollar range to generate some more interest in it. The other, the other concern that I had going into this one is with the current economy and the inflation and we were getting some really high bids, as you know, the South Street project that we just did not too long ago was really high bids, so I was a little bit concerned about that. The way that we bid this thing was with a base bid and three alternates. That was our plan for protecting against inflated bids if we get them. So that way we can pick and choose from some of the alternates to stay within our budget of eighty thousand dollars. Eighty thousand dollars is what you guys budgeted, it's in your annual budget. So the bid results we got, I did put a copy of these bid results in front of your places, we did receive seven bids, which we were really happy with. Don't be alarmed by the last one there, that's obviously a typo, the, the, it's not three million dollars. That one would get thrown out anyways, even without the typo, they weren't the lowest bidder, so that's kind of a moot point. It really came down to looking at the, the bottom two there, JDI Site Solutions LLC and Seal Creek Contracting LLC. If you look at just the base bid, Seal Creek was actually a little bit lower. But if you wanted to complete all of the work that we had here with the three alternates, the grand total of sixty-five, nine, thirteen, eighty makes JDI Site Solutions LLC the, the lowest bidder. So, and we did have a plenty of clauses in our bidding documents that allows the borough to, to be able to pick alternates if that's what you wanted to do. I think it really comes down to, does it fit your budget? Since our budget was eighty thousand, we have a good bid at sixty-five, nine, thirteen, it seems reasonable to go ahead with JDI Site Solutions. I did send an email to the staff with C.S. Davidson's recommendations and included a couple of things, like checking it against the budget, all of the numbers matched up well. Talking about the language in, in, in the contract that I just mentioned. Were they responsive, right, so we talked about those responsible and responsive words that Harry always advised us on, and they were responsive, they had all the documentation with their bids. And there was a statement of qualifications we asked for, they did respond to that statement of qualifications and they, they can show that they are qualified. In fact, we know property, I mean, the contractor with this used to work for Low Bar and our structural engineers have done work with him, so. and our structural engineers have done work with him, so, and they could confirm that he's outstanding at what he does. So he's local, so we're happy with that decision, if that's what you want to go with, with the JDI Site Solutions LLC at 65, 9, 13, 80. And those would be the two things if you, so inclined to the two blanks that are on the motion, the first one would be the JDI Site Solutions LLC, and the second one would be the 65, 9, 13, 80.
Questions?
Oh, I mean, and that's apples to apples, not apples and oranges, because I'm looking at that top bid, and if you strike out the ARS, you're looking at like $195,000 difference between the low bid and the one, you know, for more waterproofing, that's just...
Oh, yeah, yeah, they all bid on the exact same thing.
It's unbelievable. I mean, that's almost a $200,000 difference, really.
Yeah.
I mean, if you don't take, you know, just striking the last one, so, so I just, but you're comfortable with that?
Yeah, and there's a, a lot of times with bidding, whenever you get a lot of options like this, there are some anomalies where you kind of, kind of throw out that, a couple of those at the top. And you look at really the meat of this thing, and you see if they are comparative, so, right? The 65, 74, 98, those three are, are three lowest bidders, are in the ballpark.
Right. Wow, okay, thanks.
Any other questions related to the parking garage project, maintenance project? All right, if not, entertain a motion to award that?
I'll make a motion to award the construction contract for the 2023 Racehorse Alley Parking Garage Maintenance Project to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder, JDI Site Solutions LLC, at its bid amount of $65,913.80.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any additional questions or comments about the project? All right, if not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, any additional questions this month for Mr. Clayball? Okay, hearing none, on to the Police Department. Chief Glenny?
Good evening. The overall report, I just wanted to point out a couple of different things. We kind of started a, I'll kind of call it pre-recruiting, if you will. And we have, I put in here a little bit about it, but we've established kind of a mailing list, if you will, an emailing list of people that are interested. I've probably met with three or four people in my office personally that are interested in the job. Couple of those that actually, that actually live here in town now, some of them that are certified. But I'm, we made a couple, well, one recruiting visit, and I've made a number of recruiting phone calls, and the mayor and I are gonna go up to Hack on April 3rd or 4th to their police academy, visit them, they still have some pre-service folks. And I'm planning on attending the Civil Service Commission meeting tomorrow, reference the new rules and regulations. But I'm very positive about how that's going, and we're getting a wider pool, a bigger pool, a more diverse pool. So I'm really happy with that. I have a couple financial incentive things in there, if you will. We got a really good deal on a couple bicycles from the, from Gettysburg Bicycle, a tremendous deal. And we have another officer, Officer Clunk, as a matter of fact, yesterday, completed the IPIMBO, which is International Police Mountain Bike School, at the college. And you will see he and Sergeant Prewy out on bikes more often. And we, I've made several presentations to a lot of residents and got the word out that we're kind of looking for donations for the bike patrol to outfit them and maybe get them out over and above the patrol, you know, regular patrol hours now. And that's going very well. I did a presentation to the Steinware bid. Mrs. Butterfield was there, and actually, Mrs. Butterfield gave me a number of suggestions about someone else to call to see if there was some funding available. So that, that project is, it's positive as well. The, you know, the bike patrol is, I think it's an awesome community relations tool. It's, you know, it's up there with the horses. Jokingly, we said at the Steinware bid meeting, you can't really pet the bike, but I guess you can if you want. But, you know, people want to pet the horses, but that's going very well. And we'll report back next month when I have a listing of donors. I just want to make sure that folks know and can acknowledge, can acknowledge that. Reed and I had a meeting towards the end of, well, I'm sorry, Mayor Freeling and I had a meeting towards the end of last year with the President of Gettysburg Hospital, Michael Cogliano. We talked about funding some, some things within the Police Department and some of the difficulties that we had. Based on the results of that meeting and some conversations that I had with Mr. Cogliano, after that, we put in a request for funding to him, that has been included in your packet. The Wellspan, Gettysburg Hospital, and Wellspan in general approved those requests as a whole. We were very happy about it, and there'll be an announcement coming out for media purposes through PR. But it was roughly $35,000 that the hospital has contributed to the Police Department. We're gonna buy some, the two new radios for the new officers, which in case people don't know, they're very expensive, to the tune of close to $7,000 apiece. So there's, and we got a training grant renewed, and we discussed, and they've approved using part of that training money, or I guess all of that training money if we so choose, to fund personnel time, which is a big thing, because that's where we really take the hit with training. Because whether you have somebody out of training, and you're paying that person to be away at training, and then we need to fill the hole that is created taking that person off the schedule for training. And that's where, that's where we really spend a lot of money when it comes to training. So I've had a conversation with a number of you about, there's no free training. And I know Matt and I have had that conversation numerous times. The, the co-responder program, I couldn't have dreamed of the success better than what we're having. It's, she's integrating wealth department, she's, she's dealing with folks on the street, she's getting out, talking to people, recommending resources. As you saw in the report, I think that we've diverted from 302, or she has diverted from, from a 302 mental health commitment a number of times, which is a big deal, which is why that was outlined in the report.
You happy to answer any questions?
I think that's, I wanted to point out, we've had no accidents at that intersection this month, Mr. Robert. Oh, yes, I recruit, I put in your packet, the officers, the officers developed a recruitment brochure. I think they did a pretty nice job of it, I put it in your packet for you all to see. It is online, it is on our Facebook page. The other thing that I wanted to mention that is not in here is our Crime Watch page, which is a service that we bought into as part of our modernization for the RMS system, is now up and active. There's not a lot on it, but you can see it on there eventually. When you click on our Facebook, it'll take you right there, and that should put out broader information, a lot of different, basically going more towards a transparency we're looking for. It has a lot of things contained in it already to make our lives a little easier. We're gonna start a camera registry, for example. People can register their cameras with us through this Crime Watch program. Don't have to, but if, you know, if you have a doorbell camera and you live in the first block of Carlisle, and you want to know that you have that doorbell camera, or I know everybody you have a doorbell camera, but then we know, so if something happens in the first block, we know, we can come to you and say, hey, did your camera possibly capture something? It's been a very successful program around a lot of areas, so we're gonna start that and get it up and rolling. And Crime Watch actually provides the platform for that, it does crime mapping. There's, it's a fairly well-integrated system, but it's up and running if you want to take a look at it. And I don't know the address off the top of my head, but if you Google Gettysburg Crime Watch, I'm sure you can click on it. There'll be a, there will be a file address established, we have to get the domain name, Crime Watch is getting it. It will be Gettysburg Borough Police, not just Gettysburg Police, because that's kind of an issue for us, because we get tons of calls already for police issues outside the borough. But I made sure it said Gettysburg Borough, so that'll be, that'll be coming. And that's my long-winded report for the month.
Thank you, Chief.
Questions for the chief? Mr. Mayor?
I just want to publicly thank Chief Glenny and Mayor Freeling for taking the initiative to meet with Wellspan. $35,000 is a substantial contribution, and I think it underscores the sort of cooperation and trust and partnership that we have with them. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And it absolutely does, and I will say that's, that's one of the reasons that I believe it was approved, and that they're a good community partner, a good community partner for us.
Yes, Mrs. Butterfield?
I shared with the chief that on the first application go-round for Elm Street project, this bike patrol idea was big for that neighborhood. And staffing challenges at that time made it go away. But those folks were very, very eager to have a bike patrol. And so I suggested that he call Stephanie McElwee, who was the last director of Elm Street. And sure enough, she had some leads on grants for that project that she could advise them.
She's gonna get back to me with some grant things, and actually, on, Mrs. Butterfield's suggestion, here we go again. That's what kind of pushed me into thinking, well, maybe we could get some personnel time for the bike patrol funded so that we can go over and above the normal patrol hours and the overtime. Of course, that'll be over and above special events and things like that. But I really want to try to get these guys out, I'd also like to get the horses out more just to start ingratiating with the community, get a better community relations aspect going. So that's really where I'm headed with this, so, and I appreciate your suggestions, you, thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments for the chief this evening? All right, if not, we'll go on to the Officer, the Manager, and Treasurer, Ms. Stoll, Mr. Gable?
I have nothing to add, your motion's there, I'm gonna be asked to end.
In addition to my written report, one of the highlight, Chief Glenny, Mayor Freeling, myself, Assistant Borough Manager Stoll, and HR Coordinator Reithmeyer will be away the rest of this week at State College for the Annual Pell-Razz Conference. Pell-Razz is the acronym for Pennsylvania Employer Labor Relations Advisory Service. That's one of the premier labor relations conferences, frankly, in the country. It's a very good, informative conference. This group of individuals on staff go to this conference every year, and I actually sit on the advisory committee for that organization. The auditors have been in and around the borough recently for our 2022 audit. I will report tonight a preliminary surplus for 2022 of $289,000 for the general fund. The bulk of that surplus is accounting to our very robust parking revenue that we talked about. And I want to highlight that parking revenue does not include parking fines. That's a different category. To that point, it's actually, frankly, continues to surprise me. I'm wondering where our limit is, where do we reach diminishing returns for parking revenue? Because we not have, we have not changed our parking fees in almost five years, I think, at this point. January 2023 set a record, yet again, of $104,000. You can see the previous January numbers, last year was $89,000, obviously, the COVID years, $34,000. But then if you go back to the 16, 17, 18, 19 numbers, you know, 70s and 80s. So parking revenue continues to be very robust for the borough. And a corollary to that is that is also showing up in our pillow tax numbers for January. Pillow tax for the borough set a record, save the year 2018, where there was some audit work done, where extra pillow tax revenues were collected, but just under $7,900 for the month for the borough of Gettysburg in January. So things continue to be quite positive for the borough in both of those categories. And that would conclude my, no, one more, one more point. General fund, liquid cash is 1.6 million, and our operating fund right now, and another 485, 400, $949,000 in reserves.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Gable outside of the motions that we have? All right, can we start with the bills and payrolls, please?
I'll make a motion to approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Are there any questions about the bills and payrolls? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next, the COLA for Cytha Grissom?
I'll make a motion to authorize a COLA increase for retired police pensioner Cytha Grissom to be paid from the police pension plan effective February 1st, 2023.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and then I'm O U with the Garden Club, and they were here in our last work session.
I'll make a motion to authorize the entry into a memorandum of understanding with the Gettysburg Garden Club relative to the operation of the Gettysburg Downtown Flower Project for a four-year term expiring on December 31st, 2026. Charles R. Gable, MPA Borough Manager, is hereby authorized to execute and deliver the memorandum of understanding on behalf of the Borough of Gettysburg.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments about the MOU? We continue to be fortunate to have the support of the Garden Club here in the borough. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, any other questions for Mr. Gable or Ms. Stoll before we proceed on to liaison reports? All right, if not, Ms. Sellers, Main Street?
Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of things to highlight out of my report. The facade improvement program is out there on the street. The application window will close at the end of this month. I encourage businesses to take a look at this very carefully. So the application right now is the application to me and two estimates for the work that they want to have done. They are not required at this time to have their Harv approval, their permits. All those things will come, because this is a reimbursement program. So those will all be required when we put those applications together to put them back to the state, and then they'll, then they will, their reimbursement will come at that point. But right now, I need their application, their description of their project, and two estimates for that work, and that will complete their application. So it's not a daunting lift at the moment, and they'll just need to keep careful documentation as they proceed through those projects. But I, we have had some, some good response to it, but there's more opportunity. I really want to encourage businesses to take advantage of that. It's a $50,000 reinvestment in our downtown, so. The David Wills House, we're gonna be meeting with the National Park Service. This is an extraordinary opportunity to partner that we have with the Park Service to keep the Wills House open each season. We've even extended that opening into, of course, they are open until Remembrance Day, but we've pushed that, and they've continued, they've started to be open for the Christmas Festival weekend as well as another opportunity for, for things to be done downtown. So we're really excited that that continues to, that program continues to grow. We're always ready for new volunteers, if you know anybody that wants to volunteer in one of the, kind of the coolest historic places in our downtown business and district, business district. Okay, the 30th anniversary of the movie Gettysburg, I've still been talking, continue, so mark your calendars, October 13th through the 15th. That whole weekend celebration is developing nicely, and there should be some really cool stuff going on, so, hey, I'll keep you posted on that. I'm involved in the Grand History Trail, so we're gonna be working with the America 250 PA Adams County Commission and talking about the Grand History Trail and how we can go about helping to promote the completion of that trail system, as well as put some signage and things on that in association with the 250th. So we, we're working on that in conjunction with the County Commission. The Gettysburg Welcome Center, we have established at Main Street a subcommittee, because there's gonna be some big steps taken with that project, we hope, this, this year, really gathering some momentum around the things that are gonna happen. So keep, I'll certainly keep you posted on that, but really excited about the steps that we're taking and the involvement that we're having with Connor File, the original architect, and so I'll keep you updated on that. And lastly, it's not in your report, but I am working on a rural business community tools project with Main Street America. It's a pilot project, and it's gonna be looking at tools for businesses in communities our size. So it's, it's really geared towards finding possibly online solutions or other types of solutions for businesses that you're gonna find in rural communities. So it's, those, we have five businesses that are gonna participate in that here, and those results will be shared throughout our community, as well as throughout the state, to other Main Street organizations to hopefully help foster some, you know, small business solutions for, for some, some key issues that they seem to face, you know, throughout industries of our size. So I'm happy to answer questions?
Questions for Ms. Sellers?
Okay, awesome. Thank you all.
The recreation... All right, the Recreation Authority, Mr. Carr.
Just want to give a plug for Gettysburg's Best Easter Egg Hunt, because spring is coming, please to God. Saturday, April 1st, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It is a free event. All ages are welcome. And you can RSVP, 717-698-5298, and check out GettysburgEasterEggHunt.com. It's at the Rec Park, the Easter egg hunt.
Yeah. The Municipal Authority, Mr. Berger.
Well, Mark gave his report last week, and our meeting was the week before, so I'll wait until next month.
Okay. The bid, Ms. Butterfield.
Yes, their website is being renovated, and they reviewed that, came up with some suggestions. They're looking toward that being both user-friendly and business-friendly to those small businesses throughout Steinware. Ms. Sellers gave a wonderful report on what progress already on the Christmas Festival and how they can participate on Steinware. A major concern for them is getting people down Baltimore Street to Steinware and knowing that there's something down there to the south. So that's a big challenge for them. And as Chief Glenny said, he spoke with the group, and I thought an important point that the chief made was telling the Steinware merchants that a bike patrol can get into the alleys and the driveways that make up so much of Steinware. They won't have to just stay on the major thoroughfares. I thought that was a good point.
Very good, very good. The Adams County Boroughs Association, Mayor Freeling.
Yes. The next meeting is going to be, of course, on October 14th. The next meeting is March 20th, and there's going to be a legislative review by Mayor Nina Tipler and the county legislative review. And then Speaker will be Mr. Jed Smith. He is the EMA Director of the Northern Adams County Regional Emergency Management Agency. So I'll give a due report after the meeting occurs.
Okay, very good. Back to Mrs. Butterfield, the COG.
Yes, the COG meeting featured the subcommittee, the Collaboration Committee. They are focusing on cybersecurity and devising a survey that the borough will be receiving as to the needs of different municipalities for information on cybersecurity. That will be forthcoming. The Legislative Priority Committee is very active. They've gone to Harrisburg and to DC to talk about concerns for municipalities that size. An interesting conversation that happened had to do with electric cars and electric car chargers. Someone brought up that their emergency services or their fire departments are being challenged because electric cars are bursting into flame, as are the charging stations bursting into flame. And I don't know much about putting out fires, but apparently there's difficulty. It's not a standard squirt water on it, and the fire goes away when it is an electrical charging. So, after the meeting, I called Becca to get smart on our situation, and she had a lot of data to share with me, that apparently we have two charging stations within the borough. And I went out to Sheetz, Becca, and they have seven out there, but they are designated as Tesla. And I am told that Tesla is configured differently, and not every electric car could drive up and use theirs. I have a call into the college to find out exactly how many are on their grounds, and as soon as I learn that, I will share with everybody of that total.
Yeah, this is something we discussed one time prior. Unfortunately, the borough's charging stations are within the garage, which if there is a moment in the future where they can be relocated out of the garage into the alley, that would be very wise, because if there's something that could actually threaten that structure, it would be an electric vehicle fired and thrown away. There are basically two options. In Europe right now, they are equipping what basically amounts to a roll-off dumpster truck. They take the dumpster out, they crane the vehicle into the dumpster, they fill it with water. The cheaper option that's become available recently is a company is building a product for about $25,000 to $30,000, where it essentially uses pressure to puncture the battery components in the floorboard area and to saturate them. But the problem is, these things can reignite days after the fact. So, it's a brave new world with brave new problems. I know Lebanon got one of those pieces of equipment recently, but it's about $25,000 or $30,000 just to deal with that.
The, Abby, Ms. Lawson.
Yeah, Abby had a small subcommittee of us met with some of the folks at the transition nursing home on Biglerville Road and with Kim Petrona from the Historical Society is on their board about the walkway, and we're still working on that. It's expensive. It's going to be expensive. But we'd like to be able to find a way, as you know, to be able to get people safely across Biglerville Road. So, we're looking at some different options there. And they will also have an unveiling of the plaque for Tom Jolyn.
I saw that, yeah. Very soon, right?
Yeah. I can't remember the date right now, but I'll send it out to everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Butterfield, ACPO.
ACPO meets quarterly, and that will be on the 22nd of this month.
Overdose awareness, Mr. Moon.
We had our Black Balloon Day on the 6th of this month on the square. I want to thank Robbie and his team for helping turn those lights purple for us. Appreciate that. Saw them coming down today. Black Balloon Day is a day of remembrance for those we may have lost to opioid overdose. We had about 50 visitors throughout the day. We gave out about 30 Narcan kits, and we had about a dozen people come and leave a note of remembrance for a loved one. I got to meet a couple people who had both moved here within the last year to move away from situations where they had lost family, and they both said how welcoming they have found Gettysburg to be. It was very reassuring. It was a somber event, and I want to thank everybody for coming out. Thank you, Councilmember Carr for coming out. Commissioners Qualley and Martin were in attendance for the entire event. It was very nice.
Mr. Berger, trail feasibility.
Nothing to report.
All right, Mrs. Butterfield, recycling.
Yes, Saturday's the big day.
Weekend's the weekend, right?
The electronic device turn-in will happen again on Saturday. Robbie mentioned he had a conversation with Waste Management today, and in that conversation, they confirmed that it was on their calendar. They will be coming. They will be showing up. So we'll not be out there by ourselves welcoming people, turning in things. As of today, we have 42 people signed up, and I've kept it between 9:15 and 10:45, so an hour and a half. If this week, we'll take sign-ups until Friday. If there's a big push, I can expand that time, and we just stay there longer. But for now, that's what's going on. The recyclable art through the Arts Council, they have begun getting entries, and on the 7th, first Friday, will be the awards ceremony. Children really enjoy going to that exhibit. So if you have young folks you know would enjoy it, please take them down. The Borough Recycling Committee is one of the major sponsors for a prize for that event.
All right.
I have a question, Mrs. Butterfield. Did you say 42 people were signed up for the electronic recycling? Is that...
Yes.
How many of them are borough residents, do you know, and how many of them are outside the borough?
You must be a borough resident.
I thought you could pay if you weren't a borough resident.
No, that's for the shredding.
That's just for the shredding, okay.
The shredding, it could be anyone across the world, but $3 a box, free for the borough resident. But for the electronic device...
You have to be a borough resident.
Because each municipality has their own contract, and some of them choose not to pay for recycling. So, they have to struggle to find what to do with their...
Okay, thank you. I was under the impression that we had expanded that, so thanks.
May 19th. May 19th is the shredding event.
Just one more time, Councilman Butterfield, if you remind people how and where they can sign up.
For which one?
Saturday.
To sign up for the electronic device turn-in, you may go to the borough website. There's an opportunity there to register for a time and choose a time, or you can phone me. We give time assignments to keep the traffic moving. No backup on Middle Street, so 15-minute time windows are assigned.
And very well done. Everyone who's involved in that, that's very efficient, I assume, you turn out every time. All right, elected officials' comments. Mayor Freeling, you're next, sir.
Okay, I wasn't here, I couldn't report on the last ACBA meeting, because it was, I think, the 27th, or somewhere around there. But I went to the White House for a reception for Black History Month. That was the last Borough Council meeting. Thank you. So, workshop meeting. So it was very nice. It was well-attended. The president spoke, the vice president spoke, and the most important thing, this is our history, each one around us. This is our country and nation's history, and we're all part of it. Also, March is Red Cross Month. So, I talked with the Regional Chapter of the Red Cross, a lot of interesting programs, but the most important thing is volunteer, get involved with the Red Cross. They have a lot of programs, and of course, most importantly, donate blood. If you want any more information, give me a call. My office number is on the borough website. Also, March is Women's History Month. I participated with a program, even though it's outside of the borough, still part of our family, at the World War II Experience Museum, and it talked about women's involvement in World War II, and Susan Heisenhower was a featured speaker there. Very good event. Charles said we're going to the Pell-Raz Conference. But also, I'd like to say about other things I did this month. I took part in a very important, I think, event. All very important events are important. But this was the annual Fire Department Recognition Banquet. Our fire department does a lot for this community. It's wonderful that it's here, and I'm also very pleased to say that people sitting right now at this table, and you're experiencing right now, Council President Heiser, Councilman Lover, Rob back there, Rob Harbaugh, are all an integral part of our fire department. A lot of them are recognized at this year's banquet, and also two people I come in contact with almost every day in the police department, Larry Weichert, who's one of our surgeons, and also Detective Brian Weichert are a part of this vital community agency. So I salute the fire department.
And the janitor. The janitor here, Dave Staub.
Okay, I told you at that banquet, I don't like saying names. I missed somebody. Dave Staub, our custodian, is also... Anybody else? And volunteer, and I have to... Volunteer for the fire department, right? Volunteers.
Volunteer, yeah.
For the department. Volunteer to get involved in your community. Volunteer for the Red Cross, and maybe this is premature, and I didn't get an okay from him, but I know it's out there, and so everybody knows we're looking for recruits for our local police department. That gets everybody into the mix. Try to apply yourself, get the word out, tell people that you think that may be interested, and when it becomes official, it will be officially announced. But it's going on right now. So, if you know people are interested in becoming part of our police department, spread the word.
I would just echo on top of that, that if anybody is interested and they're watching the meeting tonight, that the recruitment brochure that we talked about is online and on our Facebook page. There's some other information. Anybody that's interested in a full-time job with the Gettysburg Borough Police Department can email me directly, and I will get back to you. We'll place you on that email list we talked about earlier. We really, really, really want folks to apply, get involved, and we're working on making that as easy as we can.
Yes, and council is helping. So, thank you. It's a joint effort.
Okay, elected officials' comments.
Do you have anything, Chad?
No.
Mrs. Butterfield.
The South Central Assembly met, and it's the first meeting since the strategic plan was crafted. They're setting up subcommittees, and one of them is on affordable housing. They asked for suggestions for people who are not on the board to be on those committees, and I nominated two from our community, Stephanie McElwee of Housing and Stacy Rice of At Home in Adams County. Both of them were very excited to participate in that regional effort. So we have two good housing folks in that group now.
Mr. Wolf.
Do building permits still have to be posted in plain view?
I believe so. Okay. The elected officials' comments. All right, if not, that takes us to public comment. All right, our second public comment period. You may comment on any topic. Five minutes. Yes.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Scott English, business owner, 66, 68, West High Street, Gettysburg, Pennsylvania. I asked Stephanie McElwee, who Judy Butterfield just spoke of, to actually come and brief you all on the Elm Street program and Elm Street overlay zoning district of the borough. Unfortunately, she couldn't make it tonight, so I'm going to read a letter that she sent, which I've also provided to you all. Scott, just a few quick thoughts regarding the Gettysburg Elm Street program and overlay. To be clear, the Elm Street mission statement includes the words "the promotion of new businesses and expansion of existing businesses." The Elm Street mission statement is as follows. Gettysburg Elm Street is a partnership of residents, community leaders, and government officials dedicated to the revitalization of the designated neighborhood through community development programs to create new homeowners, modernize the housing stock, and promote new businesses and expansion of existing businesses, beautify the streetscape, and improve safety, and involve volunteers. The targeted neighborhood is clearly outlined in the Elm Street overlay borough zoning district. It is a mixed use, which is most appropriate. The creation of new venues is not only supported by the mission envisioned at the Elm Street revitalization plan, but could be a real positive for the neighborhood and would really not have any more of an impact than the large weekly church/funeral services that occur regularly on High Street. Potential events proposed for the venue, parentheses, which will be controlled by borough-established guidelines which already exist, could bring tourists to this historic neighborhood. There is so much amazing African-American history in Old Getty Place that no one knows about, and we're trying to share that. A walking tour brochure, which I've shared with each of you this evening, was developed by the Elm Street program specifically to bring attention to the historic history that hides within the neighborhood. Without a doubt, the Gettysburg Elm Street program and neighborhood, Old Getty Place, has always supported and encouraged the promotion of new businesses and the expansion of existing businesses. Sincerely, Stephanie McElwee, former Elm Street manager and the executive director of the Pennsylvania Interfaith Community Programs Incorporated. Thank you.
Public comment. All right, seeing no further public comment, I would note that when we are here on the 27th, we do have a pair of hearings. Make sure it's on your counter for 6:00 and 6:30. One related to the zoning map amendment and the other related to the zoning text amendment that Mr. English is alluding to. All right, so make sure those are on your counter. Otherwise, we are adjourned.